Good evening. If you will, bow your heads, please, and join me in a moment of silence. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, and welcome to the Murfreesboro City Council, June 23, 2011. Council members, you have before you your consent agenda. Are there any questions regarding the consent agenda?
Mayor, hearing none, I move for approval of the consent agenda.
Second motion and second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. You also have before you the minutes of the May 16 special meeting and the May 25 special meeting. If you've had an opportunity to review those minutes, are there any changes, additions, or deletions to the minutes of the two meetings?
Do we make motion, do we approve them, move for approval of the minutes?
Second. All right, you have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. We have a number of third readings tonight, so I'll try to get through those quickly. We'll consider for passage on third and final reading an ordinance amending the Murfreesboro City Code, Chapter 7 Buildings, Section 7-12, dealing with International Residential Code in Section 714 and 7-15, dealing with International Energy Conservation Code.
Move for passage on third reading.
Second. Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. At this time, we'll consider for passage on third and final reading an ordinance to rezonate an area east of New Salem Highway, State Route 99, and north of West Main Street to Highway Commercial CH District.
So moved. Second.
Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. We'll consider for passage on third and final reading an ordinance rezoning a total of 11.6 acres, located east of South Rutherford Boulevard and north of Chalice Drive to Commercial Highway CH District. So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. At this time, we'll consider for passage on third and final reading an ordinance to amend the planned signage overlay PSO district located north of the Medical Center Parkway and east of North Thompson Lane.
So moved.
Second. All right, you have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. At this time, we'll consider for passage on third and final reading an ordinance, the tax rate ordinance. Move for approval.
Second.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. At this time, we'll consider any other changes to the City of Murfreesboro 2011-2012 tentative budget. Are there any? All right, if there are no others, we have an amendment, Exhibit A, the ordinance with regards to a debt service fund.
Mayor, on item C, we're not changing any of the numbers per se, but what we're having to do is changing the way they're categorized. To go along with what we need to do for state reporting, we need to show the school debt as a transfer to the School Debt Service Fund. So even though we were paying the principal and interest on that debt, on our books for debt service, it'll show a transfer. And later in the agenda, on the school resolution, you'll see that we've got a school debt service set up for them where it shows a transfer from the city, and the principal and interest is actually reported there. We've been doing this normally when we make our annual budget amendments, but we've already gotten the numbers, so we thought we'd go ahead and get it done now while we're considering budget.
All right. Thank you. All right. Then you have a ordinance with regards to the debt service. Let's see, we'll con, is that?
Needed a man before third reading.
Move, we adopt the amendment?
Second. All right, thank you. Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. So that is then the D item? Nope. All right. Then we'll consider for passage on third and final reading as amended, the ordinance, the appropriations ordinance.
Move for pass. Second.
All right, thank you. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. This time, we'll, let's see, we'll consider a motion to adopt the 2011-2012 City of Murfreesboro tentative budget as the 2011-2012 City of Murfreesboro budget.
So moved. Second.
All right, you have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. At this time, we'll consider for passage on third and final reading, an ordinance amending the Murfreesboro City Code, Chapter 2 Administration, Section 216, dealing with special revenue funds.
So moved.
Second. Thank you. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. At this time, we'll consider for passage on third and final reading an ordinance amending Chapter 33 Waters and Sewers, Section 33-1 of the Murfreesboro City Code, dealing with minimum monthly water charges and minimum monthly sewer charges. Move for approval.
Second.
Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. At this time, we'll consider for adoption a resolution approving the budget of the Murfreesboro Water and Sewer Department for fiscal year 2011-2012.
So moved. Seven.
Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. At this time, we'll consider for adoption a resolution approving the budget of the Stormwater Utility Management Fund for fiscal year 2011-2012.
So moved. Second.
All right, motion and second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. Consider for passage on third and final reading an ordinance amending the Murfreesboro City Code, Chapter 2 Administration, Sections 2-13, schedule of court costs for City Court, to adopt Chapter 49 of the Public Acts of 2011.
So moved.
Second. Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. On second reading, we'll consider amendments to an ordinance regarding weeds and grass. Ms. McGannon.
Mayor Bragg, members of council, you had in your packet a tracked version of the ordinance reflecting changes based on the discussion at first reading, and an additional change that staff brought to my attention. I'd be happy to answer any questions, as would Mr. Whitaker. The requested action is that you amend the ordinance as shown and then adopt on second reading as amended.
Any questions regarding this amendment to the ordinance? If not, is there a motion to approve? The amendment?
Move to consider the amendment. I move we.
Adopt.
Adopt the amendment.
All right. Second. Second. Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. Now, consider for passage on second reading as amended, an ordinance amending Chapter 14 Garbage, Weeds, Trash, and Other Waste, Sections 14-53 and 14-55 in Chapter 17, Property Standards, Section 17-2, regarding weeds and grass. Move for passage on second reading as amended.
Second.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. We'll consider at this time for adoption a resolution to provide other post-employment benefits for retirees for fiscal year 2011-2012. Ms. McGannon.
Mayor Bragg, that comes to you from the Human Resources Department, the City Recorder, and the Legal Department. It's something that we think should be made an annual part of your budget adoption process henceforth. As the council knows from prior presentations, GASP standards have several years ago imposed new reporting requirements on local governments relative to other post-employment benefits. The benefit that is being discussed is the city's financial commitment to pay 80% of the cost of health for retirees and eligible family members. This is something that we have to project through estimates with our actuary and report on our financial statements, and the purpose of the resolution is, as stated in the "whereas" sections, to reflect that the council is making a decision for the upcoming fiscal year to incur that expense and provide that benefit. Be happy to answer any questions, as would Ms. Ryder, Mr. Godwin.
So it does not obligate us year to year. Is that correct?
Well, it obligates you for this year. It does not obligate you for any successive years, and that's sort of the point, that we wanted to be very clear in the city's records.
Any questions from Ms. McGannon regarding this resolution? I think we're certainly fortunate to be able to provide these post-employment benefits for retirees on a year-to-year basis, and I think we've been fortunate, as I say, to be able to do that, and I appreciate you bringing this to us to look at. Any questions regarding the resolution? Then is there a motion?
Move for adoption. Second.
Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. At this time, we'll consider for adoption a resolution approving the budget of the Murfreesboro City Schools for fiscal year 2011-2012, which budget includes the General Purpose Fund, the ESP Fund, the Federal Projects Fund, the Cafeteria Fund, and the Debt Service Fund.
Move for approval.
Second. Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. At this time, we'll consider for adoption a resolution approving the budget of the Evergreen Cemetery Subcommittee for fiscal year 2011-2012.
So moved. Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. At this time, we'll consider for adoption a resolution to continue the city's membership in the Regional Transportation Authority of Middle Tennessee. Mr. Richardson, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Bragg, members of council. I have a resolution before you this evening associated with continuation of the membership of the City of Murfreesboro in what's called the reconstituted Regional Transportation Authority under Part 2 of the TCA Title 64, Chapter 8. As a little bit of a background, the Regional Transportation Authority has been around since 1988, created by a state statute. And on the 5th of July of 2009, public Chapter 362 was signed into law, which amended this statute by designating the existing language in the 1988 statutes, Part 1, and adding a new Part 2. Also, I'd like to point out that we have been certainly actively involved in the Regional Transportation Authority for many years, have monthly board meetings and committee meetings, and Mayor Bragg, of course, is on the RTA Board, as are the county mayors and city mayors of those included jurisdictions in the Nann County area. Just to kind of read this through, so that I think the public would understand a little bit of what this means. The intent of the expanded legislation is to respond to the growing need for regional approaches and solutions to manage in traffic congestion and improving transportation options for residences, businesses, and visitors in Tennessee's large urban areas. In an effort to ensure continued economic growth and prosperity and to encourage environmental sustainability, the legislation through RTA seeks to establish additional tools for local governments in those areas to work cooperatively to plan, finance, construct, operate, maintain, and manage mass transit systems and related activities to include but not be limited to demand response transit services, van pool program, ride-share program, local bus service, regional bus service, Bus Rapid Transit Services, light rail transit services, commuter rail transit services, park-and-ride lot transit-oriented developments, and all infrastructure that would be required to support or sustain such facilities or services in development. The main intent of the legislation is to provide the ability, without mandate, to establish funding tools in the forefront of these regional transit goals. These include accepting grants, borrowing money, and issuing bonds. Notwithstanding, no additional financial liability is conveyed to the city without additional action being taken by the Executive Board of the RTA as well as the City Council. With your package, I also listed some frequently asked questions that attempts to provide, did a little bit of a synopsis of expanded legislation, because it is somewhat lengthy, and I think it's good to kind of break that down. On January the 19th, the RTA Executive Board did in fact vote to reconstitute the RTA under the provisions of the 2009 legislation, being Part 2. The city, let's see, as I mentioned before, is represented by Mayor Bragg. It should be noted, too, that it's not, the RTA is not just some outside board. It is the composite of the elected officials of the cities and the counties that are the members of that board. And, let's see. Let's see, TCA 648203B requires that the continued participation of each local government in the RTA of Middle Tennessee shall be ratified by a vote of the local legislative body, and that is the intent of the resolution that is before you this evening, to ratify the city's continued membership in the RTA. I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? For Mr. Richardson? I appreciate Mr. Richardson's service on the RTA Board as my designated alternate, so he and the Mayor Burgess have done an excellent job. I think, had Mayor Burgess been the Chair of RTA?
Yes.
They've done an outstanding job, really, and I think the best thing about this is that we will, with this document, join the trend of larger urbanized areas to try to provide a variety of options for two reasons. One is to ensure the economic vitality for us for years to come, and the second thing perhaps is that we will not become gridlocked. So RTA has done an excellent job, I believe, in the early stages, and the reconstitution certainly makes sense, and I think it overall makes a tremendous amount of sense for us to continue our participation in Regional Transportation Authority of Middle Tennessee. Any questions for Mr. Richardson? If not, is there a motion to adopt?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Richardson. This time, we'll consider for adoption a resolution further specifying the process for paying bills, approving invoices, and authorizing the transfer of funds. Mr. Lyons.
Yes, sir.
Certainly, I'm happy to see you're going to be able to deal with paying bills, approving invoices, and authorizing the transfer of funds.
Yes, sir. What, the resolution we have before you this evening does set forth a policy for how we pay bills. The city charter prescribes that the City Council gets to set the rules for how we process our invoices, and the practice of the city has been that it, any bill of the city, up to $9,999, requires a city manager's signature. That means, on a daily basis, I am signing bills for $2. I have signed invoices to feed the animals at the Wilderness Center. It's less than $10, all the way up to larger expenditures. It simply takes quite a bit of time. Ms. Wright shared with me today that in the month of May, I stamped over 2,700 bills. So what we would like to do is ask for your approval of this new policy. That would say for invoices that are less than $1,000, it would require the department head's signature. There's other routine bills of the city, such as our utility bills, postage, payments to outside agencies that have already been approved by the City Council in the annual budget, transfers to other city funds, our payroll register, which is very routine, that those can be processed without the city manager's signature. Any bill over $1,000 would still come to me for approval. There'd be other bills, such as our debt service payment, payments from our insurance fund, an employee request for travel, regardless of amount, would still require my signature. But we're really trying to manage the workload. Clearly, we have outstanding city department heads, and having them sign off on invoices of less than $1,000, we think is a better use of everyone's time. Certainly gives me the ability to go grab a stack of bills and double-check and look over the shoulder. I can promise you, the Finance Department looks at every single bill of the city very closely, and if there's something that's a question, they will walk it across the hall. Our department heads, if there's an expenditure they're not sure of, routinely will call me, just to make sure that everybody's on the same page. So we think we've worked our process in-house fairly well, but this is a further refinement of that policy, and we would ask for your approval.
Having had a business that did the same thing, allowed the president to sign every check every week. I understand, but I'm amazed that you've been able to continue to operate as city manager and still sign all those checks, so I appreciate you doing that. Are there questions for Mr. Lyons or anyone for the, for the, before we adopt this resolution?
Mayor, I might add, we plan to give him a copy of our check registers as well, and that way he'll have something to see. If there's anything that looks out of the ordinary, he can always come over and ask to see those bills as well.
All right, questions regarding this resolution? If there are no questions, is there a motion to adopt?
So moved. Seven.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. At this time, consider for adoption a resolution approving applying for the FY 2011 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant Program Award for 2010-2014, designating a representative for each, for such grant, and approving entry into the inter-local agreement between Rutherford County and the City of Murfreesboro, Tennessee, for the FY 2011 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program Award in the amount of $75,865. Ms. McGannon.
Mayor Bragg, on behalf of the Police Department, this is a slightly different formulation, but very similar to grants we have received in the past. This one does call for sharing with the county that the amount has been agreed to. It's a little bit different due to Major Lester's upcoming retirement. Public Information Officer Kyle Evans would be the person you would be designating to handle the grant administration on the city and the county's behalf, and so the request is that you approve the grant with the agreement with the county that's attached.
All right, and this would be agreed between Sheriff Arnold and the City Council if we should approve that we would share the funds with the Murfreesboro Police Department, receiving $37,933, and the Rutherford County Sheriff's Office, receiving $37,932 of this total grant.
Yes, sir.
All right. Any questions for Ms. McGannon? If not, is there a motion?
Move for adoption. Seven.
All right, a motion and a second. I'd like to say before we vote that Hiram Lester has done yeoman's work on taking care of this grant for years after years, and certainly wish him well in his retirement, but I want to thank him in particular for this and for the many things that he has done through the 38 years that he has been with the city. Of course, Jim Gage is leaving also, and Linda Stacy, and we want to certainly wish all three of them well. They have been really the backbone of the department in many ways, and we appreciate their work. All right, you have a motion and a second on this, adopting this resolution. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. At this time, we'll consider for adoption a resolution regarding Energy Efficient Schools Initiative. Mr. Anderson, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. Here tonight, asking for your permission to proceed with an Energy Efficiency Schools Initiative loan. This is the third one we've come to you with. This is a million-dollar loan to put HVAC, new HVAC systems at Discovery School, Reeves Rogers. Those units are 35 years old, and we are working on building our infrastructure up. We're not asking for any additional money from the council, just that the way this is structured, that the city has to guarantee it. We will pay for these things out of our general operating expenses, because these should cash flow based on the energy savings that we'll receive. The state made it available to us after we had done the last one, and so we've applied for another one. It's a million dollars, zero interest, for 10 years. That's what we're asking for your approval on.
Having just bought a new air conditioning unit for my house, I certainly sympathize with you for trying to replace Reeves Rogers Discovery School. with you for trying to replace Reeves-Rogers Discovery School. I wonder if I could apply for a grant. Okay. You have this resolution. Are there any questions for Mr. Anderson? We appreciate him being here to present this.
Mayor, I might add, after talking to Mr. Anderson, there won't be any debt service payments on that in the upcoming fiscal year. And that's one reason we're not asking for amendment to the budget either. He said that work would not be done until next summer.
All right. All right. Any questions regarding this resolution? If not, is there a motion to adopt?
Move to adopt. Second.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. Thank you, Ms. Anderson. It's good to see you. Appreciate you being here. Consider for adoption a resolution to amend the city's financial guidelines.
Mayor, in addition to the other changes we've been making to go with GASB 54, one of the things we have to do is to set a spending policy. If we should spend fund balance, we have to tell the order of the new categories of how the money would be spent. So, having been proactive, Mr. Lyons had the financial guidelines started last year. We already had something to go to, to change. And all we did was take that fund balance section and reformat it to include the new language we needed to match up with GASB 54. So we've just taken that. You have tracked changes attached to your resolution. We've added some language and deleted one line.
All right. Any questions from Ms. Wright regarding this resolution?
So, Mayor, I'll move for adoption.
Thank you. A motion is second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. At this time, we'll consider for adoption a resolution amending the 2010-2011 current year city schools budget.
Mayor, this is, this is what I referred to earlier in the agenda. Item 20 and 21 are where we are putting in the school debt service for the current year that ends next week. We've already changed next year's budget and passed those resolutions, but we haven't done this year's budget. So these, these two resolutions are to make those corrections.
All right. Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. A motion to adopt. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. At this time, we'll consider for adoption a resolution amending the 2010-2011 current year debt service fund budget. Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. At this time, we'll consider recommendations of the Human Resources Director with regards to approving a contract with Swiss Re for stop-loss insurance, reinsurance for the city's health benefit program for fiscal year 2011-2012. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Bragg. Members of the city council, including in your packet this evening is a recommendation memorandum from myself as well as from our benefits consultant, Cheryl Morgan, which outlines the recommendation for the stop-loss insurance for the next fiscal year. I would point out that staff does request this evening that the council accept the recommendation of the city's benefits consultant to contract with Swiss Re for stop-loss insurance in the amount of $682,239.96, based on the bids received. I would also point out that staff is requesting this evening that you authorize the mayor or city manager to execute the contract when received, so that it will be in place and effective by July the 1st, 2011. The city attorney and I will review that contract before submitting it for execution. Stop-loss insurance is a benefit designed to offset a self-funded health insurance plan's exposure to high dollar or high claimant, claims, if you will. Typically, those claims would be ones that would be catastrophic and might exceed a cost somewhere in the neighborhood of $125,000, which oftentimes is considered to be what's called an attachment point. I would point out to council this evening that we received an update from our benefits consultant about one of the options that Swiss Re bid on that is not contained in your packet. There is, in fact, what's called a pricing option from Swiss Re that would include a rate cap and no new laser feature. However, I would also point out that in staff's discussion with Cheryl Morgan, the difference in the premium for this option is approximately $55,000. That rate cap option would guarantee that the next year's premium, in other words, the 2012-13 premium, could not exceed the agreed-upon premium by more than 45 percent. And in doing some quick analysis of that, that would be approximately $332,000. Staff believes that the original option proposed by Cheryl Morgan, if you will, in conjunction with the first Swiss Re proposal, is most prudent, even without a no-new-laser or rate cap option in place. And for your reference, a laser is considered a individual, higher individual-specific deductible. And I'll tell you that the current status of the Swiss Re review is that they're, they're finalizing information in terms of the disclosure that the city has provided, as well as one of our former stop-loss carriers. But again, we do believe that the current proposal from Cheryl Morgan that has been forwarded from Swiss Re in the amount of $682,000 is the best option. Incidentally, that's an approximate 2 percent increase on the current combined premium from UHC and Beacon. I'm happy to answer questions at this time.
Any questions for Mr. Godwin regarding this recommendation? Have we ever exercised this stop-loss?
We have, Mayor, yes.
And now, the last five years, how many times?
A number of times. It depends certainly on the specific individual, because it is related strictly to specific individual coverage. And the time that I've been here, which is approximately two years, I've seen approximately six occurrences of a stop-loss insurance. And that's after the specific deductible of $125,000 is met.
All right. Any other questions? If not, is there a motion to approve this contract?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. You have a motion, second, to approve. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Godwin. And while we have certainly kind of gone through this new business and these third readings fairly quickly, there was a lot of work that was involved in this. And council, I think, has been very prudent in looking at every department. And also, I appreciate the work of the city staff in getting through this budget process as they have. So my compliments to you. And I appreciate you and your staff, Mr. Lyons, for what they have done to make this process as streamlined as possible, but not necessarily easy, but certainly streamlined. And thank you, Ms. Wright. At this time, we'll entertain any beer permit applications. Ms. Wright?
Actually, Mayor, we have several tonight. We have a special event at 2250 Northwest Broad Street. And we have, that one is, is ready. It's met our requirements. We have some others that, in anticipation of possibly missing another meeting next week because of the holiday, we have a restaurant opening at 113 North Maple Street that expects to have their final inspections tomorrow. And then we have three convenience stores, one at 2011 Southeast Broad, one at 227 Casey Lane, and one at 352 West Norfield Boulevard, that my contact in code says they're almost through with their codes inspections, and they've met our other requirements. So we would like to have those approved contingent upon passing codes, so we can issue that permit when they're ready.
All right. You have these beer permit applications. Is there a motion to accept?
Move for approval. Second.
All right. Thank you. Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. You have before you the list of statements to be considered for payment. Are there any questions regarding any of the bills to be paid? And if not, is there a motion to pay the bills?
So moved. Second.
All right. You have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. I have several board and commission recommendations for you. The City Hall Art Committee, I'd like to appoint LeAnn Carmack for full term. She would be replacing Cheryl Harris, who has resigned. The Board of Zoning Appeals, the BZA, I'd like to reappoint John Rogers and Davis Young. The Planning Commission, I'd like to reappoint Tom Clark and Kurt Wade. Historic Zoning Commission, I recommend reappointing Kurt Wade to the planning, as the planning commission member. Parks and Recreation Commission, to reappoint Elsie Easter, Timothy Rotiger and Ricky Turner. I recommend these appointments or reappointments to you.
Move we accept the recommendations, the mayor?
Second.
All right. You have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. Is there any other business from council or staff to come before the council at this time? If not, you are adjourned.